A meeting to order, please, if you'd stand for the pledge. Okay, Alex, do you want to do the roll call for us, please?
Libby?
Here.
Brian? Vanessa? Fritz? Anya?
Here.
And we have a quorum. We do have a couple of changes to the agenda here tonight. Want to move Buzz up to the first for the water ordinance? And then we'll put Reynolds at the next spot down. And then we have also add Mr. Ferris to the bottom of that as well. So I think we need to make a motion for that.
To move the modified concept on the Landmark Park to the bottom. But for the phone, adding Mr. Ferris to the agenda.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, we get to recess the meeting first. Oh, wait a minute, hang on a second, Buzz. We need to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes June 2, 2025.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? And we also approve the minutes from the executive session from June 5.
I'll make a motion to, I guess, that everything discussed in the executive session meeting was what was posted.
A second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're ready, Buzz.
Thank you. Thank you for the accommodation here.
Yep.
Andy, do you have my slides in there or Adam? I'm going to make a real brief presentation and then I believe we'll close the meeting for a public hearing. But I wanted to sort of explain the water rate, financial plans to everyone. Yes, ma'am? Is this better? Okay, sorry. Okay. The, for the record, my name is Buzz Crone with O.W. Cronin Associates. We're municipal advisors and we're the municipal advisor for the Fortville Water Financing. We did a bond anticipation note about almost four years ago of $11 million to build a new water plant. And our original plan was to start phasing in the water rates over a period of time. But I think with the number of things that were going on, not to, at least of which is the road project that I think really screwed up life for everybody here for a while. And then some of the issues they had when the plant first went online, that those phased-in rates kind of got put on the back shelf till we got to a point where everything, we got roads working again, we got the plant working now the way it needs to be. So that's why we're doing this all in one step tonight instead of in three or four steps over the last four years. I might point out, it's been 16 or 17 years since the last water rates were adjusted here in town. So if you compounded a 3% inflation factor over 17 years, you'd be at about 65 or 70%. You've had the advantage of these really low, low rates for a long, long time. Your rates are, the current rate for 3,000 gallons is, see if I can read that.
Seventeen sixty.
Seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents. That's, you know, one of the lowest rates in the state. The one that's on the chart that's below you, City of Anderson, they are in right now for, they've already approved a rate that would take that 3,000 gallons up to $37. Now, theirs will be phased in over a period of time and they're pending approval at the IURC right now. But so their rates will be considerably greater. You know, that's probably the closest benchmark we have to Fortville here. But after the rates are in place, the minimum charge for 3,000 gallons is $26.25. So you'll still be, you know, among the lower water bills in the area, in the states. So that's, you know, the good news, the percentages sound sensational because our rates are so low right now. But it's still less than a 3% compounded inflation factor, considerably less. Let's go ahead to the next slide. Again, the last rates were used, were prepared in 2008 and they were approved by the council here in 2008. We used a test year of 2007. And then back then, we were still under the IURC jurisdiction. That took another, you know, nine, 10 months to get through that process. So they weren't approved until 2009. We had a three-phase settlement agreement with the commission and we only implemented the first phase of that three-phase increase. Again, in 2022, we proposed a three-phase increase that would basically get us to this point right now. But again, with all the other things going on in town, those water rate increases were put off until the other problem or, you know, issues you were dealing with were stabilized. But now we're at the end of the rope with respect to the $11 million loan, or they call it bond anticipation note that was issued to Greenfield Banking Company back in 2021. That matures in October of this year. So we'll be, we'll need to adopt a bond ordinance. We're proposing to put a million five of cash on hand, but the water you told us accumulated from development fees over the last four or five years. You've basically added about 200 customers a year over the last five years. So the growth has helped build up that, those capacity fee and connection fee dollars to a point where we don't have to finance the entire $11 million. Where are we going to finance nine and a half million? Let's go to the next slide there. I think I maybe may have covered a lot of this. Right now, we have 3,600 customers. Again, we've came over the $1 million in the capacity fee fund. And we're going to take about another half a million out of other available water funds to buy down the financing from 11 million to nine and a half million. The current market rates for a water project such as this, on a 20-year term, about 5%. We're working with Greenfield Banking Company again. They've been very generous with the town. I think we're on the plane about 2.3% or something like that on the bond anticipation note. So they're anxious to move, for that to mature because their cost of money is a lot higher than that. Right now, we've, we think we can pay this off in 15 years and still hit the coverage ratios that are needed to be deemed a credible credit. And so that, our bond documents will say 20 years, but our goal is to finance it over 15 years. That saves a lot of interest and gets it paid off a lot quicker. Adam, thank you. These numbers are pretty small, but they do bend over all the time. They do give a picture of the financial condition over the last three years. You see back in 2022, our income, gross income from meter sales was a little less than 1.5 million. Now it's approaching 1.7 million. So the growth that we've experienced has really helped our cash flow situation considerably. The net operating receipts, that's the amount that we have left to make bond payments worth. The bond payments will be approximately $800,000 per year for the new bond. So that's the primary reason we need a rate adjustment right now. And we'll also have to fund up a longer debt service reserve over the first five years of the bond issue. So there are some other requirements that need to be included as well. Let's go on to the next one. Here's our projected revenue requirements. The current column just shows the interest we've been paying on the bond anticipation note. The right-hand column shows what our bond payment would be if we got a 15-year deal at 4.5%. And so our total revenue requirements are going to go up from about 1.8 million to just about $2.4 million per year. And our current rates are producing about a million seven. We took a, we earned quite a bit of interest income last year, but if we're paying down our bonds with the million five, we reduce that interest income going forward. But so we're basically looking at about a $678,000 increase in revenue that we need to generate. And again, for a 3,000 gallon, minimum user, it's about a, about an $8.75 increase. For a 4,000 gallon user, it's about a little less than $13. And our projected bond coverage ratio is about 147%. If it's below 125, there's not a market for it. But so we've got a little bit of cushion there. Let's go on to the next slide. The other thing we're doing is we're consolidating some of the rate steps. The, the old rates had sort of oddball rate blocks for the first 3,233 gallons. We didn't even meter them in that detail. I think we metered them in tens or hundreds of gallons, hundreds of gallons. So we wanted to fix that. So those first two road steps, we're going to go, the first 4,000 gallons will be at $8.75,000. The next 6,000 at $6.55. The next 40,000 at $5.10. And over 50,000, about $3.65. So those are the, those rate blocks. And again, the minimum charges for residential customers are going to be still around $26,025. Let's go ahead to the next slide. We'll show some of the, I don't know, we need to get into this much detail, but it does make a big difference for apartment houses when they hook in. We want to be able to get a fair amount from every apartment. And so we, we've had, we've actually had this EBU formula. EBU is equivalent dwelling units or household equivalents. And there's two techniques, one's meter size and one is the number of EBUs. And so we have an illustration here for a 40-unit apartment complex. But are any of you apartment owners in here? Okay. They're, they're used to this formula because we've done that in the past. But let's go on to the next slide. If you're an outside city water customer, that means that you reside outside of the corporate boundaries. Since the city taxpayers pay higher rent through their property taxes, they've had a surcharge in place. Actually, let's go one more slide. The current fire protection charge for outside city users is $8.25. That will go up proportionally to $12.30. And then if you have larger water meters, they go up according to the meter size. We're also increasing our system development charges from $1,200 to $1,800. And our connection fee from $582 to $900. Those are costs that no existing customer has to pay. It's only for new development. All right, Adam, let's go one more slide here. Considerations and action items. The Indiana Cloud, that 8-1.5-3-8 sets forth the municipal water rate making formula. And it uses the words, the rates shall be sufficient. Doesn't say may or might, or you might want to think about it. It says shall be sufficient to cover cash operation and maintenance expenses, debt service and a debt reserve requirement, and then depreciation or allowance for extensions and improvements. And that is basically what we have included in these rates. Then the other thing they look at, you know, when you're getting ready to issue bonds or if you have bonds outstanding is the debt service coverage ratios, which basically is your net operating revenue after deducting the cash operating expenses dividing by the annual debt service. And again, we hope to be in the 145% range, 147% with these new rates. So obviously, the first action item for council is to ultimately approve the water rates that will support a nine and a half million dollar bond issued so that we can retire the bond anticipation note before it matures in October. We're probably looking at an August bond sale and closing in September before the ban matures. So that in a nutshell is why we're here tonight. And Anya, I don't know if you want to close this meeting and open up the public hearing for anybody that wants to make public comment, but I think we need to have that track record on that. And I'll be around to answer questions.
Okay. Thanks, Buzz.
Okay, so I need a motion to recess the council meeting?
Can we recess it and open the public at the same time? Yeah, I'll make a motion to recess the council meeting and open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we'll take public comment at this time if anybody is, any public comment? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we'll make the consideration to adopt ordinance number 2025-5A, amending the rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the water work system.
Anybody have any questions? I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-5A, amending the rates and charges for the use of services rendered by the water work system.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next will be the
The ordinance number?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
And real quick question on that. So those system development charges, like the 1,800 and the 900, those take effect immediately, right? Correct. We don't have to wait for publication ordinance or anything, so. Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to consider introducing ordinance number 2025-6A, amending and restating the water bond ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sign that if you would, please. Well, Buzz, I guess you're good. You're free to go. Yeah. Hope you get feeling better. Okay, so next up, we have the modified concept plan for Landmark Park.
Heath Luther, Heath Luther, Parks Manager for the Record. As everyone knows, we had, starting with FAI, some time ago, there's been discussions of reworking Landmark Park and doing some things there. Through that process, we have come up with some concepts. Doug from Reynolds is here to go over that a little bit more and really just kind of give you guys an idea of what we're looking at and in which direction we need to go from there. So Doug?
Good evening.
Aye.
Doug Tischbein with Reynolds Construction. Nice to see everybody again and nice to meet the new members. Back in 2021, 2022, we were contracted through the Build, Operate, Transfer procurement model to do some improvements in Memorial Park. And the only thing we did at Landmark at that time was just some surveillance cameras as a part of the Burcata system that we installed throughout some of the facilities. So what I'd like to do is just spend some time just reviewing what was in that scope of work so you can see some of the befores and afters. Adam, if you want to advance through. So the top is the basketball courts. As you can see, there were a number of infractions, cracks that really were more of a, kind of a sore and a liability potentially. So that was a resurfacing effort that we did down there. Took some trees out just to make sure that it weren't damaging that area. Excellent, Adam. Community center, we did a number of things there. The air conditioning systems were, had a high level of deferred maintenance and were at the end of their useful life. And so they needed to be replaced. So we replaced those as well. The roof was a, was a black roof. And I think if I remember right, it was tornado damage at some point in time. And, and so there was some parts of it that were coming apart and just it was, it was leaking in some areas. So there was a renewable energy component that we put solar panels on top of the community center. So we put a white reflective roof on that facility to help generate renewable energy. So Adam, you can advance through. There's the solar panels. If you haven't been up there, I think the, the softball fields kind of get a kick to see if they can hit hard and long enough. Because when I have been up there in the past, there's a number of balls. So I think they're using it as a target, but they're, they're pretty impact resistant. But it's a, it's a, it's a, the system has been working very well. I checked on the projected offsets from what the consumption rates are and, and we're hitting or exceeding what those, what those values are. So I think that's, that's, that's good. The other big improvement that we did was the shelter house. I don't know if anybody's been in there, but the, the upper pictures and the lower pictures, before and afters, that was a significant change to that facility. And, and I have to assume Heath, and you can, you can probably vouch for it, that probably the rental of that facility has maybe gone up a little bit because of what those improvements are. It's a, that was a major update. You go to the next one. So this is just a couple of pictures for the before kitchen, after kitchen, the fireplace wall to the new fireplace wall. We put a galvanized roof, ceiling in there with, with can lights. Major, major bathroom renovation. So that's a really nice facility. We also put two new windows that were eventually, that were taken out at some point in time. And when we took the drywall off, we saw that, we put them back in so that it really opened up that space. These are the tennis courts. You can see the cracks. Those are also what I was referring to down in the basketball. So you can see the lower left-hand corner is the resurface. And then we also put in new lighting there as well. So you can see that we pretty much touched a lot of the facilities that are at that park. And this was one of the larger ones is the nightlights hadn't worked for a number of years. And you can see some of the poles that we cut down. The one in the middle was actually, I think, struck by lightning. And you can see the interior of the other pole. And we put in a system called Musco, which is the premier lighting system. So we've got the, the new lighting reflection that was taken in the morning when there rained. But you can see the, the uplights and the downlights. And now that allows you to have softball games and baseball, I think, at nighttime, which you hadn't had before for probably four or five years. So I think that's really helped from tournament play. The bottom left-hand corner is, it's a, that kind of shows you the structure versus what the wood poles were. It's a, it's a concrete column with a, with a steel column on top of that. And of course, we renovated a couple of garages in this building and turned them into this beautiful council area and cleaned up the front a little bit. Took a couple of garage doors out and gave you a new, a new town hall, which I think is much more functional as Joe and I were working. It was overcrowded. The, the flow from inside was just kind of cut up and wasn't conducive to your departments and the way that they needed to run their businesses. Pat, the chief, he's got a new space and I think he's using it pretty well. So, you know, that's, that's, that's a lot of the work that we've done. I think we also, I talked earlier about the Burcata surveillance systems that we put in throughout the town. And then I think there was an entry system that we put down at the dog park, if I remember right. So, so that's really what the, what the project was that we did in '21 and '22. And, and we did this through, again, Build, Operate, Transfer procurement model, which is a, is a request for qualification based model. And we could talk about that a little bit more. We were contacted by Heath to come in and take a look at Landmark because it needed to be refreshed. It's got some tired assets in it. The gazebo is tired, the playground's a little tired, and it isn't really conducive to community using it the way that they need to or can use it. So I've asked HWC, which is an engineering partner of ours that we've used on a number, and Rebecca is here representing their firm, and she's kind of the designer behind the plan. So I'm going to give the podium to her and we're going to kind of take you through at a high level what the changes are that we're, we're proposing. And, and we've been working on this probably for 45 days, I think, with Heath and Joe and Libby. And I think we've gotten to a plan now that is, it's a really good plan. So we've got it up here, but we also have on boards. And so we're going to go through two slides. We've got the overall master plan and then we have a phasing plan if, if we want to talk about that as well. So I don't know if everybody can see that. Or Adam, can you blow that up a little bit?
I'm going to pull up the other individual document so it's a little cleaner.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug. So my name's Rebecca Mahoney. I am a project manager and landscape architect with HWC Engineering. I've worked on a lot of parks and recreation projects throughout the state and planning projects as well. And I've been at HWC for about eight years now and really enjoy working on parks projects. So like Doug said, we started off visiting the site, actually, which is one of my favorite ways to start a project, is to visit the site and see how the condition is. So like he said, there's an older gazebo that's kind of small, sidewalks that are pretty narrow and cracking. The, even the area, like the steps are The even the area, like the steps around the gazebo and the old fountain, is it, you know, really accessible? You know, and kind of the old fountain is almost like kind of like a pit too, so it'd be kind of nice to clear that out with some of the things that we discussed while we were on site. The playground was also old or needing time for updates. And. There's also an existing pedestrian bridge by the. Existing drainage ditch too, that was talked about needing to be updated. So some of the programming elements that we talked about when we were on site was the desire to have wider sidewalks, so I think right now you have about three. To four-foot sidewalks, which we typically recommend at least five five-feet sidewalks just for wheelchair accessibility nowadays. And preferably six if we can. And that's if two wheelchairs want to pass each other, but really on the interior part of the park. It was desired to have even wider paths, about eight-foot wide paths, so that's what we're showing in the concept plan. One of the biggest elements of this revisioning of the park was the gazebo and wanting to have a bigger gazebo. To host for not only to be used for passive recreation throughout the week, but also to be able to host events out there. And to potentially host weddings if that's desired as well. So we're proposing a thirty-foot diameter new gazebo. And putting some picnic tables under there, and then we are also starting to. Point up here at this one, but starting to re-figure the grading around here. So like I said, the great change between the steps. Where the layup like the. Slab is for the gazebo and then down into that fountain area is about two feet, so you really have to think about that. When in terms of accessibility, if you want to get rid of the steps and kind of have this open gazebo for events. So what we've done is we've thought about that and thought about accessibility as well and have come up with a terracing concept here. So this number fifteen here is really showing like a stamped concrete area that people in wheelchairs. Who want to attend events can sit here instead of in the lawn that's not really as accessible. And then you have these terracing steps that step down. They're about ten feet wide to get out to there. And then these would be steps leading to the parking lot here, and your accessible route would be from down here. Into this diagonal, so your accessible parking here and then the main entrance. This would all. Be a flush condition up here and then also to here would be flush and then into the playground area. So as far as accessibility, this would be the only non-accessible route into the gazebo. And that's just to achieve that two-foot grade change. You need about twenty, at least twenty feet to achieve a five percent grade change, did not have handrails. So we are really trying to avoid having handrails and obstructing that vision around the gazebo. So that's kind of how this layout came to be for the gazebo. We popped it in the exact same spot. We also gave circulation around the gazebo, so that way you don't have to, if someone's enjoying a picnic inside the gazebo, you don't have to walk through the gazebo, you can walk around the gazebo. To get to the playground or other places in the park. So that's kind of how this is laid out, and we have some minimal low-maintenance landscaping around that to really beautify it as well. For weddings or just the ambiance. And then here at the entrance too, it was desired to have maybe update that entrance sign there. As it is kind of getting old and made of wood, so maybe my time to update with this project. So we're kind of showing repositioning that and then adding a little landscape there to really buff that up. And then also kind of proposing rock mulch instead of bark mulch too, just for aesthetics as well and ease of maintenance. We're also proposing to relocate the memorial over to here. Currently, right now, it's about over it's over here. It's kind of just often its own own place. And the circulation doesn't work super well with the rest of the site, so we decided to relocate it, so we would salvage the existing memorial. And move it and then also have stamped concrete in here like you would have up here by the gazebo for a really nice aesthetic. And then have some really nice site furnishings to just for people to sit and really, you know, reflect at the memorial. With some landscape improvements as well around that. We're also proposing there's some plaques towards the entrance of the site. So we're proposing to relocate those along the new paths as well, so those would not go away. They would just be salvaged and also relocated. And then when you get over to the playground and this area here, this is, we're proposing like a. ADA restroom facility with. Kind of like an overhang with like pavilion porch area, so this right here would be two family restrooms and some storage for the parks. Department to be able to store some things for the parks in there. And then underneath here would we have a couple of tables that people could enjoy sitting underneath that pavilion next to the playground. And then right here is the proposed new playground layout. We've been working with Miracle Playground, right? To do that design and layout. So they're still kind of working through what that might actually be, so that's not finalized right now, but proposing just an upgrade to what's already there. Also planning to install port-in-place surfacing. Or artificial turf, depending on what's determined in the end design, but that is an accessible surfacing. Mulches or engineered wood fiber is really is considered is 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 technically ADA compliant, but. When we interview and talk to people who have kids with disabilities, they still find it very hard to navigate an engineered wood fiber, so we usually, if we're looking to do an accessible playground. We do recommend port-in-place or artificial turf, so that's what we're proposing here. Another thing that was mentioned when we were touring the site was this one desire for some just different types of seating, just not your standard bench all the time. So we, like I said, we proposed some picnic tables in here that can be moved when there's an event. It could be moved out into lawn areas. But they can be in there during the week when there's not anything going on. We also have some tables under here that are different than picnic tables, and then we also have some unique benches in here for the playground area for parents to sit on. And watch their kids in a seat wall, and then we also do have some traditional benches as well. Up to the north part of the site here, so there's an existing concrete pad on site right about in here. And when we were first touring on site, the idea was to potentially reuse that concrete pad and for this. Fitness Court Studio, this is a specific product through a specific company, and they offer grant funding. And it's a healthy cities initiative, so it's a specific product and a specific thing, so everything is already kind of set size-wise. So that existing slab is a is about half the size of what the Fitness Court Studio is. So when I was looking, we were looking at laying out this park or revisioning this layout. I had placed, we had placed it here, but then still thinking of the idea of events in the summertime. If you place it here, it kind of blocks this space, so then this beautiful open space you have past the sidewalk. Then it would be blocked by that fitness court studio, so we moved it over to the side, so it doesn't block that open lawn space for future events. And then talked potentially about adding a few parking spaces over here just because it's so far away from the accessible parking, so maybe adding in a couple. A couple parking spots, one eighty, one ADA space with an aisle. Then we're also showing a turnaround because this isn't the ideal layout for a parking lot or parking, so we would we would recommend having. One space for people to be able to turn around and maneuver easily on site. And then this is the Fitness Court Studio layout, so basically on the right side here. They have like like actual fitness equipment that you can work out on like steps or. You know, levers that you can do pull-ups and those sorts of things on, and then on the other side here, it is an open like yoga or. Fitness programming space that the parks department could program to do yoga or zumba or a multiple, a multitude of different things out there. And so we put a couple of site furnishings over there as well and some landscaping just to give it a little separation from the rest of the park. And then the last item, like I said, was that prefabricated bridge at the north part of the site, so that existing bridge is. Not in the best condition and not very wide either, so this project also proposes putting in. A six-foot wide prefabricate and fifty-foot-long prefabricated bridge to cross that a little more safely and. More structurally sound, probably. And I think that's it on the on the plan. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Is there power? Are we made accessible power in the gazebo?
Yes.
Is it part of it?
Yeah, that would be part of it. I think that there's fifty amps is what we had. Yeah. And probably also lighting incorporated internally to the gazebo and internally into the pavilion and restroom facility.
Did we talk about taking out the current lighting structures that are within the park? Is that what we?
And then. We did work on a phasing diagram as well, if you guys want to see that. It's the next page, and here I have this. So phasing, just thinking about priority priorities for the parks, what we really heard with priorities was really wanting to widen the sidewalks. And the gazebo and the restrooms, so that's kind of what we've separated the first phase into, which would be focusing on really developing the site. And all of the sidewalks, all of the new lighting, the new gazebo. All of those relocating all these new items, and then. Phase two would incorporate the playground improvements and then the prefabricated bridge. And then phase three would be the Fitness Court Studio and the parking associated with that. No, that we don't, I don't have anything planned for that, I suppose. There's there's there. Yeah, there's a sight light here, but I don't, you'll. Okay. Okay.
Remove it, put it somewhere else, or until a bigger one?
The idea would be to demolish the existing one and then install a new one that I think the current one is. I don't even know if it's twenty feet diameter. It's twenty-five, it's twenty-foot diameter or smaller. I'm not sure what the existing one exactly how big it is, but we're proposing a thirty-foot one, so it's going to be a bigger gazebo.
And there's, like I said, there's there are five feet in the eight or that extent outside of the gazebo, so you've got walk-around areas. And the old existing gazebo is not. It can't be repurposed, it's really in not very good condition. Unless the town wants to do something else. We were not planning on that. So that big open field from the ditch all the way up, pretty much will remain open for. Whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, for we we haven't, we really focused on here. The Fitness Court Studio is the only thing that's maybe bleeding a little. Just right across the sidewalk, but that that's all that we're proposing north of that sidewalk there. About a foot, we might, once we actually get into design, we're at a conceptual level right now, so once we get into design, we'll work at those finer details, exactly what that will look like. But definitely not more than twelve inches. We could, we could look at. You could, you could do both, honestly. The sloping is. I mean, you can do both, honestly. It would just be, I think, a little bit more earthwork, but between earthwork and concrete work, it probably each one balances out. So I guess if that if it's a, yeah, whatever the preference is on that. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thirty foot is pretty big. I'm trying to scale it to this room. Yeah, I mean.
So Zionsville has a similar pergola in their their little park, Lincoln, Lincoln Park? No.
Lions Park.
Lions Park. And they have weddings there. It's raised higher, it's more central, you know, but it's in Zionsville. It's it's the smaller park that's away from where all the playground equipment is. It's a quiet park, but they. I just was sent a video with the band and there was plenty of room for the band. I don't know, you guys are in a band, like it's thirty feet, plenty of room? Okay, so we can have dancers and a band and, yeah, okay.
I know.
Any other questions? So we went with, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead or if you're getting ready to say this, this phased. Concept because of cost. And but we haven't talked about like how long the phases would take, like, do you have an idea of how how long?
I mean, I mean, that that's all depending on funding. Right, so I I think that's what I would say is, you know, we we've got to get through a procurement phase for the B O T process. To really start putting numbers to a budget that are are construction-type numbers, right? I think that if if the community likes the plan and council says this is what we want you to move forward with. Then we're more than happy to do that, but we'd like to start procurement. And procurement is pretty simple. We've been through it a couple of times before. It's worked favorably for you. And so it starts with two advertisements in the local paper, pretty simple, seven days apart. And then you you would issue an R F P Q. Companies like Reynolds and others would respond to it, qualification-based. You choose who you want to work with, and they go through the rest of the process. So it goes pretty quickly. Engineering and and layout has some time that they need to complete. Some of the equipment is long lead items, so we have to kind of consider that in the schedule. But there's some talk about maybe the R D C being involved. I don't know, but we've got to kind of figure that into the schedule as well, so. I guess I would ask if you guys would entertain a motion to agree to start with the advertisement phase and solicitation tonight, then that clock starts. And there's still no obligation, right? We're not, you 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 could give three R F Ps and say, you know what, we just want to go a different way. And that's the risk that we take by doing what we're doing.
On dollars for financing on this, we heard about D N R having such a large amount of dollars. Are we considering that, or is the town going to fund this?
I will say D N R funding is not available anymore this year. They just announced this about a week or two ago, but D N R funding for Land Water Conservation Fund. They are taking that and using that internally this year, so they are not accepting applications this year. So we just found out about that. So they are not accepting applications this year. So we just found out about that.
Well, about next year, oh, this has been moving already. I don't see any happening.
Well, that's just negative.
You know, the bubble trails used to have a lot of dollars and so I think there's just a little uncertainty when it comes to federal grant money that for personal recreation, that's the first thing that gets cut unfortunately. So I think that there's just uncertainty to know what's going to be available next year.
That's my hope too. Well, and it's right there in the TIF and it needs updated. People, I live right there. People walk through there all the time. It's a draw to the community.
We have a dollar figure yet on the phases? An estimated dollar figure on any of it? Is it? Yeah.
Been value engineering the improvements for the last 15, 20 days. Uh, you know, what's numbers are from a million to 2 million. What are you, what are you, what are you going to, what are you going to include?
I will say we would like to do all of it in one phase. But just not knowing what the costs are, we ask them to break it into three phases just in case we needed to take smaller bites. But ideally to do it all in one phase would be the way to go.
Well, I think the first phase is probably the most important.
Definitely.
So that's the way I look at it.
Well, and we can also do fundraising or crowd. What is it called? Crowd funding?
There was also. Through that came in over budget, bids came in and we were able to utilize patricity. And so they partnered, I think, with IDHA to do a match. So if you could crowd, crowdfunding, fundraising. Um, so if you can, um, you can raise up to $50,000, you can get a a grant match to 50,000. So um, if your community can come up with that much, now it doesn't have to be that much. That's the maximum that they'll match. So if you can raise 50,000, you'll get a grant for 50,000. That's a hundred thousand dollars that you can project. But um, the only caveat with that is you want to set a realistic goal because let's say you try to reach for 50,000, you only get 40. Um, then they'll uh, they won't match that. So you want to be realistic with your goal and kind of be a little more strategic. But um, it's been very helpful. That is nice to express with it. And a lot of people use it on the state. Now you can go to the website and have a huge map and there'll be all the projects that have used that.
This year, our, yeah, our schedule is this year. We'll break, break ground this year and get all the sidewalks out. I mean, there's the demolition and excavation is pretty significant on this project. And so, you know, we're, we're ready to go.
Did you, didn't you mention there's some grant, grant funds for the fitness part?
There. And it's on a first come, first served basis, basically. If you get that, they only have so many for the year. And if you're on the lower end submitting your application, you might go and put that back in. And that grant amount that you get is not as significant as we would think for the cost.
Sure. I figured that.
There's a couple of options out there. I think we're going to go through the process. So, you know, when, when, when we respond to the RFQ, we'll put some information in there for you to think about and make some determinations on.
I think the RDC has been pretty open about wanting to get involved, so.
All these. All these companies you deal with, just give you whatever pricing is.
Yes, we've got, we've got holds on, on, on the budgets that we currently have in place. Um, you know, it all depends on, on how quickly we can move through procurement. And and you have somebody selected to kind of be your developer for this project. That's what we would do. Yeah, I mean, the, the preference is for us to procure all the equipment so that we've got the handling and warranty responsibilities for all of it. Versus just having Joe go buy a playground and then it just doesn't make the construction process as easy as it should be. The other thing I would add, we talked about the phasing and phasing a project does add cost to construction because of demobilization or remobilization. So that's another thing to consider when we're, when we're talking about that as an option.
Just withdraw new people and young people. We have a lot of young families moving into the area. I think it'd really be a well spent money right next to the downtown.
It's good to start this danger.
Okay, so we need to decide if we want to move forward with the RFP in the bot. Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be the, the advertisement and then the solicitation of the RFQ.
Yeah, yeah. I think it sounds good. I'm good with that. Go ahead, Libby.
You bet. You're better.
Proceed with the RFQs and the advertisement. Yeah, yeah, advertisement.
Make a motion to proceed with the RFQ and advertisement for procurement. For the BOT.
All in favor? Aye. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Nice presentation.
Do we need a resolution for the bot? Or it seemed like last time we had to have a resolution or does that cover going forward?
Yeah, we're not there yet, I don't think.
Once we're there.
Once we get there, okay.
Okay, so next up, we have Brandon and Kristen Ferris. You want to come on up?
I will say, it's, it's kind of weird. I feel like an adult all of a sudden.
Sometimes it makes.
So my name's Brandon Ferris, my wife Kristen and son Asher. We have a very simple request. We would like chickens in our backyard. Um, over the last year and a half, our family has been plagued with dietary issues. I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease. I'm getting much better. My son is gluten free. My wife is dairy free. As you can imagine, food sucks. We always joke that all we eat in our house is chicken, rice and carrots in various forms. Although we will not be raising chickens for meat, we simply want eggs. Eggs are probably the biggest form of our diet, in our diet. We go through the three of us, almost two dozen eggs a week, which is a lot for a family of three. Um, we actually, I, I like to say that we grew up as a family here in Fortville. I think the Sterretts would attest to that. And I think half of the town council knows us and has known us for many years. You guys all used to watch Asher grow up since he was two and all called him the prince of Fortville. As he's now giving me a big thumbs up. But uh, that's, that's really the only request we have. We actually left Fortville. It was the biggest regret. We have those are a family and very quickly decided we're going back home. And we were very fortunate to be able to get a house back on the exact same street we left. Um, New York Street there in Timber Ridge. And while we were away, we lived in Brownsburg and we actually had a flock of chickens. And unfortunately, we got all roosters instead of some hens. So the flock didn't last very long. Um, but we, we learned a lot and we learned how to raise chickens. And even though we didn't get any eggs, we learned how to raise chickens. So that's all we're here for. We have notified all of our neighbors through certified mail. Adam, help me go through all that process. I believe you all have a letter there as well. Yeah. Any questions for me?
Any questions from your neighbors? Everybody okay?
No, ever. In fact, they all want us to. They're, they're all begging for us because they're like, we just want eggs. We live on New York Street. Just our backyard actually backs up to the bison field. So the bison farm right, right off 13, literally in our backyard is a herd of bison. Yeah. The ditch in our backyard is the county line.
So I'm assuming Timber Ridge doesn't have any rules about.
Correct. We do not have a homeowners association.
Yeah, I figured not. Okay.
Yep. So we're just following a town procedures to ask you guys for permission before we dive in again.
I have hens. I, I highly endorse the idea, you know?
Oh, yeah. We, we loved the chickens we had until they got aggressive because they were roosters. Yeah, and then they fought each other. But we would, we would only have hens, um, no roosters. That's no need for them. And then we would only have approximately six is what we think we can handle.
Proper. That's a good number.
Yep.
Is that going to give you two dozen a week?
It'll help supplement. Yeah, once, once they start laying, you usually get anywhere from, yeah, four to six a day, which is funny. Mealworms help them produce during the winter. At least that's what I've heard.
So, yep, need a motion. Yeah, it's right. That first patch is right there. This, this inception to this. Which this is our. Just that we're going to approve. Yeah, motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve chickens for the Ferris family.
Yeah, to the code.
An exception, yeah, an exception to the code 93 dash 20, section A, subsection nine.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Good luck with the chickens.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so there's no old business. Joe, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing for me tonight, unless you have something for me.
I do not.
Can I ask a question, please? What and where is the ordinance for that we had to have no chickens? Wasn't there a boundary line? I mean, I'm not saying that not, I'm just asking what our old ordinance said about no chickens.
The old ordinance? I don't recall what the old ordinance said. Yeah. It was pretty brief.
To the county line. Okay, and that's where you're at. Okay, that's what I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that our ordinance that we had in place wasn't in conflict with where he lives. Okay, because I've never seen it. I just remember fighting for it years ago. So now do you have to change our ordinance so that there can be chickens?
No, it's an exception every time. That's what we just did. Going to have to ask for an exception to the ordinance.
Yeah. Adam, do you have anything for us?
No, nothing for me tonight unless anybody has questions.
Keith, do you have anything else?
Have a couple of things I wanted to touch on real quick. First of all, the rough draft for the community park survey is done. Um, the lady in the consulting office that puts it together online was out last week, so I'm expecting it to be online this week to give it one more review. And then once we're good to go, we'll go live with that. So um, I went to the Main Street Business Association. Just I'm going to try and gather as many social media people in and around town to be able to post this park survey. Um, and I'm going to continue to work on some, hopefully some incentives, you know, gift cards and things for people that can be drawn randomly if they go in, fill out, uh, fill out the survey for the parks. So uh, the other thing that I have too, it's not up yet. I talked to Alex and Joe a little bit about it today via email. Uh, the Sharks contract for the year is coming due September 1st. We've had zero issues. Everything's been great with them. Um, and they would like to continue that contract. So I would like, uh, your guys' really approval, just uh, we don't need to go through what we did before since it's just a renewal. But just wanted to get your guys' blessings on following up with them and making sure that we're not redoing this contract after the fact that we're out in front of it. And I don't suspect anything's going to change. Alex is going to look over the, the contract again to make sure, you know, we're good to go on it. But uh, that's the plan. Um, so if you have any questions as far as that, let me know.
And then. For the record, we have not had any issues with that in the park at all. So there's been no like conflicts, disputes from that association.
Good.
Last thing that I've got is just kind of put it on your guys' radar a little bit. We've had and are going to continue to have some tree work. And then around the parks, we had a big issue last week with about a 300 year old oak that fell into the creek. Yeah. Yeah, it, it was, the three of us worked on it for about eight hours and didn't make a dent in it. So we had to call in some guys that actually had the equipment to be able to do it. Um, I know Joe's got some tree work coming down Main Street and stuff a little bit. And I saw an email today about some concerns with some trees over at Landmark Park too. Um, so we're going to, we're going to be doing that. But with that being said, the Parks Department itself, from a budget standpoint, we've spent a lot of money this year on equipment and just repairs and things like that. So um, we've got a mower down right now, our big one, our 96 inch. We think the transmission may be going out on it. Um, so bear with us as we try and borrow the street department or the water department's mower. It's quite a bit smaller as we try and work through some of the, some of the park stuff here, probably in the next couple of weeks till we get that mower back. So that's all I've got unless anybody's got any questions for me. Thank you.
Patrick.
Uh, I've got a couple of things tonight. Officer Grimm resigned last week. He did not uh, make it through his FTO process, so he resigned. Um, we're working on finding replacements sooner than later, hopefully. That's the first one. Second one, I would like you guys to consider um, declare surplus for the Dodge Durangos to accept sealed bids. And then for the money to be allocated to the new equipment outfitting of the cars, which we already have that budgeted, but that would just save that in the long run. Um, we're not going to use the Durangos any longer. And if you guys could declare them surplus, then I can just go out and put in and accept bids and start that process to get rid of them. So if you could do that tonight, I would appreciate it. And then last but not least, um, Joe and I had talked briefly a little bit about, and Alex, about um, maybe some exigent circumstances for a sick bank, not really a bank, but like maybe a donation of sick time. I possibly have someone going to need some additional time if we can do it and figure something out. But I've reached out to all the other chiefs and the sheriff in the county to, to get some policies on how they do it and what exigent circumstances apply in those situations. So I'll bring that to you probably the next meeting for consideration. But I will let you know uh, as we progress, but I will, I don't have enough info, but I wanted to put it on your radar, radar right now that I'll be bringing that info to you shortly.
Do we need a motion for the surplus?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to. I'll make a motion to determine the two Dodge Durangos are surplus and use the money to outfit the new vehicles.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Let me see. Nobody's here. Alex, do you have anything?
I don't, unless you have questions for me.
Public comment? Any more public comment? Are we comment?
Guys, Rich Case, Fortville Action. First of all, I wanted to say a great presentation on the park was really impressed with the work that you guys put in on that. Reason I came up here, wanted to just comment, Fortville Action recently has approved a grant that we're going to be giving to the Vernon Township Library for a story walk. Ashton has been working on trying to find a location for that. And I know that she's been successful in McCordville, getting grant money through the Community Foundation of Hancock County in the, I think the amount was $10,000 to put one in in the park that they're doing. And I would just kind of like, I know that that's an interest that she has. And I know that they were able to get those funds through Community Foundation. So as you're working through the parks process, I know that that money's out there. Could be a nice amenity to add to that park, add no cost to the town or no, no, you know, impact to the budget. In the meantime, I think we're going to do something on Main Street is what we're, what we're putting in. But I wanted to bring that up because there's an opportunity to add that feature. And I know it's something that she's interested in having and I think would be a, a nice feature to add to the, to the plan. So that's all I had. But I just wanted to also say, I appreciate the work that you guys put in on it and was a great, great presentation. And I look forward to seeing it come, come, come to shape and see it get put together. So appreciate you guys.
Libby, you have any comments?
Just that I'm ready to go watch the game. Go Pacers.
Nothing for me.
Have nothing?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most adjourned at 7:41. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming.